Ladies and gentlemen, with nine hands up our capable six clerk, Ms. Lisa Carroll.
This is the pre meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, October the fourteenth. We have approval of minutes from September ninth and the sixteenth.
Any issues in the one? Okay.
Appeals, we have requests for wave of the noise ordinance. One, October the twenty fifth from three P M. until nine P M. in Frye Park. October the eighteenth, from twelve P M. until ten P M. on Sharonham Drive. And October thirty first, eight P M. until two A M. on Creekwood Drive.
I'm gonna try to look at the one on Sharon hand to trying to cut back the time. Probably just cut back the time to seven o'clock.
Okay.
Is that the one in the?
Yes.
And this is the same one that the same girl that?
Yeah, has some, yeah. They're just gonna try to meet everybody halfway. All right.
And Mr. President, can we change the one in District Six to midnight?
Okay, midnight, okay.
And? And I'm gonna, I'll double check. I might move it to ten, but let me, let me double check between now and council on that one, too.
Okay. All right, Madam Clerk.
Public hearings today is a public hearing to consider the proposed modification of a previously approved planned unit development for property located at forty-three fifty Moffett Road. Public hearing to consider rezoning property located at twenty-six oh-two, twenty-six-ten, twenty-six-twelve, twenty-six-fourteen, and twenty-six-sixteen Old Shell Road and ten-fifty-seven and one-oh-seven Item Avenue from R-one and B-two to B-two. Public hearing to consider an amendment to the downtown development district regulating plan to rezone property located at two-fifty Saint Francis Street from T-five-point-one to T-five-point-two. Public hearing to revoke the business license at sixteen oh-eight Saint Stevens Road. Public hearing to declare the structures at six-ten Pettit Avenue, five-oh-seven Booker Street, nine-sixty-two Government Street, fifteen-fifty-one Kellogg Street, public nuisances and ordering them demolished.
All right, Mr. David.
Yeah, Mr. President, I've got an update for Mr. Carroll on nine-sixty-two Government Street. And I apologize, I thought we had corrected our mistake. This is listed as a demolition. We're asking to secure this. This is historic structure in historic district. Now, I do want to mention just to Mr. Carroll, just an update. About three and a half, four years ago, the current owners acquired this property. They have made some improvements, but they are not at the point where they're productive. We have a history of demolition permits, certificates of occupancies being issued, where the pattern of the owner will do some work and then they'll go stagnant. The permits will expire. We received calls and complaints because we have the building that's exposed. Right now, the property owner does not have a permit, and that is why we're here before council. It has expired, and the owner has not taken actions to go forward.
This is probably as next to all.
That is correct, yes. That is correct.
Jesse has had to work out there and over a year.
That is correct.
This is, when we talk about the structure downtown and how we're finding people for not taking care of the property, this is the type of business we need to be when we find people who are critical about a strong relentless, that's basically what I, this property was better off secured before it was purchased. It was purchased and eighty percent of the buildings been demolished, but nothing being done since.
I believe that's a good summary, Mr. Carroll.
I would think that there needs to be some like finding place. Okay, on top of security, because for security, is he, he has the ability, you can, I has the ability to take for any security that needs to be done out there. It needs to be secured, but it needs to be forced to do.
Based on conversations with the owner, I do expect him at the ten-thirty meeting, and maybe he'll provide some more insight. But what you said is exactly true over his pattern. And we see that he is not moving forward to finish the project. And I would even also state that in the packet that's presented to council, there's an engineering report that does show some deficiencies and some recommendations with the framing.
The structural, that is not, not.
Hundred percent, hundred percent.
I really don't, I guess Paul, I need to kind of be careful what I say about what's, what's out there, but I don't even know if the building can be saved a hundred percent, you know, unless it's totally reframed, but that's not our responsibility. If we're gonna secure it, then, I mean, we need to be sure that we're gonna be able to, to, to make sure it goes forward. The other thing is that I saw a, when I went by to look at it, I saw a cell sign on it. It's been listed now, so.
That is correct, based on the others conversation I've had with my staff, that he's looking to sell the property. There's one small issue that he needs to get his renovation permit to secure the exterior, but he's decided he's not comfortable with doing that himself. That's what he's interested in. At this point, I think that the city should lay waste an engineering report, and if we do take action to secure the building,
I'm fine with that.
So, so we're changing this from demolished to secured?
Yes.
That is correct, the, the ordinance that we submitted to the package should secure.
Okay.
I did not get a chance to change on the.
Okay.
David, one question. Do we talk to anybody in, in engineering or in architecture office to see if we secured it? Would it, would it be stable enough to restore?
At this point in time, no, because we don't have the authority to move forward to do that. However, yes, municipal enforcement will work with the historic department for, for some standards. And we will have to hire an architect to draw plans if we do secure the building.
So this is gonna be a major cost, this?
That is correct, and I would expect those contracts to secure the building would have to come back to city council, exceeding the fifteen thousand dollar mark.
I think that, I think there's more legal questions here now than, than they are just secured. And my concern would be recoverable cost would be my concern.
Now, I do want to just follow up in conclusion that the notices that municipal enforcement has sent is for both securing and demolish. If council feels it should be demolished based upon the engineer's report, you have the authority to do so.
Well, you know, I'm gonna ask that we save anything historic, especially on, on a government street. I just want to make sure that we have a proper way to do it, a proper way to secure it. Also, that temporary fence, there are people behind it. I mean, so we need to make sure that we monitor that better or get a more secure fence to keep people from going in and out.
Madam Clerk.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. The Mobile Youth Council provide updates about new members and the upcoming youth summit. Danny Cordy will present the annual results of the Mobile Sports Authority to the council. Maxine Walters provide information about reaching the bar program at Williamson and Blunt High School. Rodney Tumer offering agenda to help with the youth violence program. Nina Dorch, workforce development and community initiatives. Reggie Hill, budget amendment, housing repairs, performance contracts, and discretionary funds. Vehicular fleet inventory list. Municipal enforcement ordinance, modernized approach and new code designations. Fiscal distribution ordinance, accountability and disbursement of funds. Departmental oversight ordinance, refined structure for internal and external investigation. Legal representation ordinance, three third-party retainers, and best practices for investigatory powers. Ordinance is held over fifty-two zero forty-six, adopt chapter fifty-two real property maintenance for enforcement. Article eight vacant structure registry for Henry Aaron Loop.
Mr. President. I'd ask that we hold this over one additional week to try to fine tune some of the language in the ordinance to make sure we get it right. There's no objection to that.
Sixty-four zero forty-eight is the rezoning on Lakeside Drive from B-three and I-one to B-three. Consent resolutions held over forty, ten forty-four, declared structure at two-sixty-five Cuba Street. Public nuisance and order demolished.
Excuse me, Mr. President, I've got an update for Mr. Carroll. We have good news on this one, that the owner has stepped up and they started the demolition, and they do have a demolition permit. We'd like to table this one permanently.
Resolutions held over twenty-one, twelve forty-five, authorized contract with Bill Smith Electric for emergency generator at MPD Third Precinct. Zero-one, twelve forty-six, authorized franchise agreement with Fiber Utility Network doing business to Alabama Fiber Network. Zero-eight, twelve forty-eight, approved purchase order to Bobcat of Mobile for compact loader with accessories. Zero-eight, twelve fifty-one, approved purchase order to Dozers for compaction roller. Zero-eight, twelve fifty-four, approved purchase order to Thompson Tractor for emergency generator. Zero-eight, twelve fifty-five, approved purchase order to Tractor and Equipment Company for Dozer, for Dozer. Zero-nine, twelve fifty-six, authorized revision to the Adeka Community Development Block Grant.
I'm sorry about that, council, I'm asked that we can hold this over for one week. City attorney asked us to hold it over just one week on that one.
What was the reason?
Looking at something else.
A different location?
Possibly, yes, sir.
Zero-nine, twelve fifty-seven, reallocate funds from Capital Project IT Technical and Infrastructure Upgrades to Capital Project IT Fiber Expansions, upgrades for fiber optic expansions and upgrades at city facilities. Twenty-one, twelve fifty-eight, authorized contract with Allred Architectural Group for Dolphin Island Parkway New Community Center.
Counsel, I'm gonna ask for your support on this particular resolution, twenty-one dash twelve fifty-eight. And also, I might ask, you know, for a vote for support on zero-nine dash thirteen thirty-eight. Both of these projects are some very, very important projects, not just in District Three, but inside the city of Mobile. And I'd like to thank the mayor administration, and also, I would like to thank even the people off at the Senior Sales Center Foundation. For years, I mean, backdate me many, many years, this community had been asking for a recreation center. The closest recreation center in this area is like five miles away. My former colleague, John Williams, had, the center used to be located in District Four, but in twenty-ten, the lines had changed. But I'd like to thank John Williams for listening to the residents and ask if they've been asking for a senior center. So back then, that administration, Councilman Williams, they had, went to a church and opened up a senior center at a church. My former predecessor, Jermaine Burrell, he was able to move from a church to a current building, whereas that now, which we was leasing from Mobile Community Action, Mobile Community Action was leasing from the school board. So between John Williams and Jermaine Burrell, now we at CJ Small. And the people now only still asking for up-to-date modern senior center, they asking for a recreation center, which backdate towards Clint Johnson days. So many years, this community felt like they had been neglected. And so now we at CJ Small and Sandy Stimson days. And I'd like to thank the mayor, I know when he first came into office, that was one of his first stop, where he had his inauguration party. And pretty much, right now, you know, the seniors have been asking for, and the residents, you know, when you coming back, Mr. Mayor? So right now, where we at now is that not only that this administration and this council had only, not only provided, brought the land from Mobile County School Board, and right now, what's in front of us is a design contract with money to build it, you know. We even, you know, it's a great opportunity for residents, you know, across, you know, just not District Three, but across the, this area of town. We had many seniors throughout the years to even leave, you know, across different parts of, you know, different districts to come down to South D I P. because of the involvement at the senior center. And one time, we had even more high-record numbers than the one on Hillcrest Road, which the city had once built years ago. So this will give the opportunity for not the seniors just off of South D I P., but the seniors throughout this particular area, especially in the five-mile radius, to have an opportunity to go somewhere where they can have a modern senior center. Also, this residents now there can have a modern and a recreation center, which they've been asking for for many years. And not even on that, we have three schools down there, which is Gear Yard, B.C. Rain, and Pillings. And pretty much, it's nowhere for the kids to go out to school. So right now, we're looking to also have a Boys and Girls Club house down that particular way, along with a food pantry. So I am asking my colleagues to support this resolution that's in front of us on today. Madam Clerk.
Zero-nine, twelve fifty-seven, reallocate. Oh, I wear that on, sorry. Twenty-one, twelve fifty-nine, authorized contract with George Glazer for Glasser for, to provide professional services for the Office of Professional Responsibility. Twenty-one, twelve sixty, authorized contract with National Maritime Museum of the Gulf of Mexico to create a Jimmy Buffett tribute exhibit. Twenty-one, twelve sixty-one, authorized contract with P.O. Russell for upgrades to the Mobile Riverfront redevelopment, Cooper Riverside Park, and Great Lawn. Twenty-one, twelve sixty-two, authorized contract with Thompson Engineering for access management and signal upgrades on Dolphin Street from Sage Avenue to West I-sixty-five at Spring Hill Memorial Hospital.
Mr. President.
Mr. Penn.
Can someone let me know how long this will take for the upgrades?
This overall effort's got two-hundred-and-seventy-five working days, which translates into about two years. We don't anticipate it taking that long. I mean, it's really, really a streetscapes-type project. It's not replacing everything beneath the ground, but there is, there is up to about two years allocated for it.
Okay, thank you.
Twenty-one, twelve sixty-three, authorized contract with Bagby and Russell Electric Company for security camera maintenance. Twenty-five, twelve sixty-four, accept temporary construction easements for miscellaneous drainage repairs for Halls Mill Road at Spring Branch. Twenty-one, twelve sixty-six, authorized contract with McElhaney Construction Company for construction of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Avenue Complete Streets Project northwest of Butchers Lane to Beauregard Street. Ordinances being introduced. Sixty-four zero forty-nine is a modification of the previously approved plan, planned unit development on Moffett Road. Sixty-four zero fifty is the rezoning located on Oshel Road and Item Avenue. Sixty-four zero fifty-one, considered amendment to downtown redevelopment district. Eighty-eight zero fifty-two, ordinance deeming certain property not now needed for public or municipal purposes and authorizing the sale thereof, one-sixty-five South Dearborn Street.
What is that? What are we selling there? Who are we selling it to?
The unoccupied house that surrounds. It's an L-shaped lot that's not buildable that surrounds the guy's house.
So he's just gonna acquire it, maintain it, add it to his.
Acquiring it at market rate.
I hope, well, Jamie, the reason I ask is because the neighbors were asking what was happening right there.
Hopefully, nothing, this is gonna be his backyard.
Did we send out notice?
Yeah, we did full RFP disposal process, everything.
Well, do we send out notice to two-hundred-and-fifty feet of the neighbors and all that other stuff?
It's not required.
Not required, no.
But that, it was on the website, advertised, we put a first house on it, I think. Neighbor should know, yeah.
Eighty-eight zero fifty-three, ordinance donate any certain property to the city's affordable housing program and authorize an option to lease thereof eastern portion of ten-fifty Baltimore Street.
Mr. Jamie.
So this is County Park, the rec center, it's getting completely redone. This is the vacant land next to it, that's baseball field here. So our proposal is to move the baseball field back here, be multiple, multiple purpose baseball field, football field. And this helps reconfigure ten-ten Baltimore by moving some of those units here, get a knockdown pieces there, then the housing authority go back later, knock down the rest of it, and move it back. So ten-ten will be completely redone, there's new housing instead of.
Has the housing authority committed to rebuild it, knocking down and rebuild it?
Yeah. Yeah, the timing on this is, it's matched up with the hotel street properties. To do a bill, make sure the people that live here have a partial right to go here with voucher system. So the timing on them actually clearing this obsolete, will be after hotels already have the money.
And that allows us to clean up the unstable and unsanitary conditions of the existing properties? What's the timeline?
The lease option is so the developer can keep the project feasibly active, so they can get it to state bond application. They need that between now and November first, application to November first. If they get that in, bonds are typically awarded in summer, so the next summer. And the closing within six months of that, so two years construction average, about three years from today.
Did you say the housing authority rebuild it?
No, this will be privately owned, privately managed. The housing authority would be probably part owner, minority not maintaining anything. They'll have an option to purchase at the end once seventy-five years runs on.
So no funds coming from the city?
Be disaster funds.
It'd be. How much?
It's eleven point three, I believe it's.
Eleven point three?
This is coming out of the fifty-three million, right, that we, that we got? And, and the biggest part of this is the ability for us to be, for the housing authority to be able to come back and clean up the other side of the street.
There's not enough room on their site to demo, reconfigure it all, and then not lose units at the same time. So this helps them navigate their site, there's not a footprint there.
So when they clean that portion of the land, what's the plan to do with that?
This will be seven units, seven units here, there's ninety-five total, so they'll put at least twenty-five back. Bonds are typically forty, so put forty back, which puts green space in the backside.
Okay.
We're just vacating that small portion right away, indicated on the.
Yeah, that'll be future vacation, gonna clear it, some developers need it. Right now, they're, so we could, they might not need it, but it's, it'd be.
All units will be affordable? Size, twelve hundred to thirteen hundred square feet? All right, that's fine, I just.
That's still in design, just layout, you know.
I, I do have one request. We know that Baltimore Street has been a bad, one of our bad streets in Mobile, Alabama, and especially the project unit, which is known as ten-ten Baltimore Street. So my request is that the address, make sure it's changed, but we can get out that statement of ten-ten Baltimore Street to revitalization and everything, and make sure we have a proper name for that particular unit. We revitalized that street several years ago, completely rebuilt it. New houses, we have some new houses on Marine Street now, Restore Mobile looking to build like six more houses on Baltimore Street. So it's an area that we're looking to revitalize and everything, but it's a great project. And again, make sure we just get out that statement of ten-ten, we're gonna bear that and put that to rest. Amen. Yeah.
Yeah, Jamie, one more question. The standard of new development, will it be held to the same accord that the Hope Six project was with Red Sox?
The same developer as Maryvale was the developer on this one.
Sorry, same developer as Maryvale is developer on this one. This will be townhouse style, though, instead of the three-story, so it'll fit the neighborhood better.
Great news, all right. Madam Clerk.
Okay. So consent resolutions being introduced. Zero-three, twelve sixty-eight and zero-three, twelve sixty-nine, are reappointing Louis Golden to the Board of Adjustment and appoint Crystal Taylor to the History Museum of Mobile Board. Zero-nine, twelve seventy, transfer funds from District Two Discretionary Account to Parks and Rec. James Seals Center to assist with the upcoming harvest giveaway. Thirty-seven, twelve seventy-one, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of allowance retail liquor class two license to Quick Pick Package Store on Saint Stevens Road. Forty, twelve seventy-two, twelve seventy-three, twelve seventy-four, and twelve seventy-five are declaring the structures, the structures, public nuisances and ordering them demolished and secured. Fifty-eight, twelve seventy-six, and twelve seventy-seven are authorizing removal of weeds and assessing costs for removal of weeds, group sixteen sixty-eight and sixteen sixty-six. Sixty, twelve seventy-eight, and twelve seventy-nine are proving award of special bonus to the Real Estate Asset Management Employee of the Month and to the Officer of the Month. Sixty, twelve eighty. Twelve eighty, twelve eighty through sixty, twelve ninety-six are determining appropriations to Marjorie Cougar's Van, Maynard Four Foundation, Oshel Road Magnet School, PTO, The Grind's Young Entrepreneur Academy, Alabama Pecan, Pecan Festival, Child Advocacy Center, Theater High School, Ridgefield Property Owners Association, Wilmer Place Homeowners Association, Dedicated Dentist, Inc., Hands Up Charity, Hillsdale Booster Club, Mobile Municipal Fifty Boys Raiders, Mobile Bay Area Veterans Commission, National Maritime Museum of the Gulf of Mexico, and Mobile Council Navy League Serve a Public Purpose and Approve Payment. Thirteen, zero-three, thirteen fifty, reappoint Adam Metcalf to the Board of Adjustment. CIP resolutions being introduced. Twenty-one, twelve ninety-seven, authorized contract with Gaines Utility Construction Company for sidewalks along Dolphin Island Parkway, one-hundred-ninety-seven thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars. Twenty-one, twelve ninety-eight, authorized contract with Jay Payne Organization for CIP Hillsdale Senior Center renovations, three-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars. Twenty-one, twelve ninety-nine, authorized contract with Neil Schaefer for construction engineering and inspection services for Dolphin Island Parkway sidewalks, thirty-eight thousand, six thousand, ten cents. Resolutions being introduced. Zero-eight, thirteen hundred, approved purchase order to Alamo Group Texas for mowers for public services, twenty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-fourteen dollars and thirty-six cents. Zero-eight, thirteen oh-one, approved purchase order to Altech Industries for aerial truck, one-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars. Zero-eight, thirteen oh-two, approved purchase order to ATFM for network cameras, thirty-six thousand, ninety-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. Zero-eight, thirteen oh-three, approved purchase order to Capital Tractor for utility vehicles, twenty-three thousand, six-hundred-and-fourteen dollars and seventy-three cents. Zero-eight, thirteen oh-four, approved purchase order to Cat Head Media for media research and editing services for the Buffett exhibit. Forty thousand, zero-eight, thirteen oh-five, approved purchase order to Chevrolet Watsonville National Auto Fleet Group for dump body, Peter Reel Truck and Dump Body, three-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty dollars. Zero-eight, thirteen oh-six and thirteen oh-seven, approve a purchase order to Custom Concepts Carts for two long bed golf carts, twenty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars, and for golf carts at fifteen thousand, four hundred dollars. Zero-eight, thirteen oh-eight, approved purchase order Dana Safety Supply for emergency lighting and up, unfitting for Chevrolet Tahoe and pickup truck, forty-one thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars. Zero-eight, thirteen oh-nine, approved purchase order to Detecta Chem for two spectrometers, and it's fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars. Zero-eight, thirteen ten, thirteen eleven, thirteen twelve, approved purchase order to Empire Truck Sales, seven-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty dollars. One-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars. One-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, one-hundred-and-ten dollars. Zero-eight, thirteen thirteen, approved purchase order to Image Trend for annual renewal of patient software management, twenty-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars and seventy cents. Zero-eight, thirteen fourteen, approved purchase order to Limbaugh Motors, one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars and six cents. Zero-eight, thirteen fifteen, approved purchase order to Melt, Melt Water News U.S. for annual subscription for broadcasting, online news, and social media monitoring services, twenty thousand dollars. Zero-eight, thirteen sixteen, approved purchase order to MHC Truck Leasing, six-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty dollars and twenty-four cents. Zero-eight, thirteen seventeen, approved purchase. Zero eight thirteen seventeen, approved purchase order to Nits Sum Promotional Manufacturing Corp. for assorted promotional items, twenty-three thousand eight hundred sixty dollars. Zero eight thirteen eighteen, approved purchase order to Noma Networks for annual renewal of network threat detection services, seventeen thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars. Zero eight thirteen nineteen, thirteen twenty, approved purchase order to Parrish Tractor at fifty thousand one hundred ninety-seven dollars and sixty cents and seventy-five thousand five hundred sixty-one dollars and twenty cents. Zero eight thirteen twenty-one and thirteen twenty-two, approved purchase orders to Port City Traglars, forty-eight thousand one hundred sixty-three dollars and one hundred and eight thousand four hundred and one dollars. Zero eight thirteen twenty-three through thirteen twenty-five, approved purchase order to send some equipment at nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars, three hundred fifty-five thousand two hundred fifty-seven dollars, and three hundred seventy-five thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars. Zero eight thirteen twenty-six, approved purchase order to software company for annual renewal of intelligence management software at seventy-four thousand four hundred dollars. Zero eight thirteen twenty-seven, approved purchase order to Cyrus Ford Lincoln at fifty-eight thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars. Zero eight thirteen twenty-eight through thirteen thirty, approved purchase order to Sun South for at five hundred and three thousand three hundred forty-seven dollars and forty-four cents, one hundred and forty-four thousand nine hundred dollars and forty-eight cents, and two hundred and six thousand seven hundred fifty-six dollars and thirty-four cents. Zero eight thirteen thirty-one through thirteen thirty-four, approved purchase order to truck equipment sales at three hundred and eighty-one thousand six hundred sixty-six dollars, one hundred and forty-six thousand forty-nine dollars, fifteen thousand seven hundred dollars, and twenty-five thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars. Zero eight thirteen thirty-five, approved purchase order to Vector Solutions for annual renewal of personnel training qualification evaluation and equipment inspection software, seventy-six thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars and sixty-two cents. Zero nine thirteen thirty-six, approved allocation for the City of Mobile Housing Improvement Plan Enterprise Fund, one million five hundred thousand dollars. Zero nine thirteen thirty-seven, transfer capital reserve funds and close out inactive capital account.
Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. Reynolds.
I've got a question about this, and I can't fully understand what's going on with this, why we're transferring money from one account to the other here.
Yes, it's just a part of our account cleanup. The reserve account that you see that we're closing out has been in existence since two thousand sixteen. We believe it's been existence since prior to that, two thousand sixteen's when we, when we installed a new software system. There's been no activity on that account during that time. It was funded with nine hundred seventy-one thousand dollars in two thousand sixteen, when it was brought in. The only activity has been thirty thousand that came out in two thousand eighteen. We're simply closing that inactive account and moving those funds over to the capital reserve account.
What rolls into the capital reserve account currently? Not the hurricane of the capital reserve, but the other?
Unspent dollars that are left over in the capital, in the capital plan that are not spent, and any unallocated dollars at the end of the year.
So, for example, the discretionary funds that we do not spend in a, in a year, those would roll into the general fund, I'm sorry, to this capital account?
So discretionary would roll into the individual district.
But in a capital reserve account for the individual district?
There's a, there is a, in the individual districts, you don't have a reserve account such as that. You have a contingency fund, and we roll those dollars into that contingency fund. So that's where those go. There was a resolution two council meetings ago that rolled those over. Um, this is simply closing those, those, um, this account out. Um, there's no change to that. There's no expenditure of the dollars. It's just a collapsing of those accounts. Um, over the next twelve, twelve months, we expect there's gonna be about two hundred of those that come through. There's just a number that we're working to clean up to identify our cash properly, and this is just a kind of an inception of those, those transactions.
It's, it's hard for us to sometimes understand, you know, these numbers that are associated with these various accounts. I'd like to see sort of all the various accounts that we have.
Yes, sir. We're, we're actually working to collapse those. And then the plan in the Finance Department is it will bring those to you annually, and you would approve those in a resolution, so you would see what those are. So in addition to the collapsing of these, the goal is to bring you, um, documents to show what each of those are, and then when there's activity to that, there'd be a resolution that, that identifies that specifically.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk.
Zero nine thirteen thirty-eight, transfer funds from Capital Project to Capital Project D I P Community Center, two million dollars. Twenty one thirteen thirty-nine, authorized contract with Benjamin Vector Studios to design, model, cast, finish, deliver, and oversee installation of a sculpture of Jimmy Buffett for the National Maritime Museum, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Twenty one thirteen forty, authorized contract with Bill Smith Electric for emergency generator, two hundred thousand four hundred dollars. Twenty one thirteen forty-one, authorized contract with Cell Co. Partnership doing businesses for Verizon Wireless for wireless telephone service and equipment, three hundred thousand dollars. Twenty one thirteen forty-two, authorized contract with C Thornton for miscellaneous drainage repairs, districts one through seven, one million one hundred forty-nine thousand six hundred ninety dollars and fifty cents. Twenty one thirteen forty-three, authorized contract with Friends of McNoo Cemetery for maintenance and operation of the cemetery, twenty thousand six hundred sixteen dollars and sixty-seven cents per month. Twenty one thirteen forty-four, authorized contract with Volker for construction, engineering, and inspection services for Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Avenue's Complete Streets Project, one million four hundred eighty-one thousand five hundred and seven dollars and eighty-four cents.
Uh, just a question, Mr. Carroll, you know exactly what this is, this is doing? You know exactly what this is doing?
You're talking about Friends of McNoo?
No, 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 M L K. Yeah.
Good morning. This is the construction inspection contract for the construction contract that you're voting on today. This is the first street of it.
Oh, so when is actually this project is gonna start?
So right now, this is the second stage of the review that we have with the Restore Act folks. So that's the federal grant that we have for this project. After you vote and approve this contract today, it will go back to the state for their final approval. Typically, that's taken about six weeks, so we're looking to hopefully have a notice to proceed before the end of the year.
So I guess the, the business question is, it's not gonna affect Mardi Gras, is it?
No.
No, sir. We're starting at Butchers Lane. So no matter what this year, if we started before Mardi Gras, it will have no effect. And those will be single lane closures, so we'll be working on either side of the street. We have plans in place, just like we did for Broad Street. When we do have, you know, we're moving farther down the street during the parade route to have it restored and open, we're gonna demobilize and remobilize, so nothing will be affected.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, uh, you asked about when it will start. Uh, it was my understanding, two weeks ago, we're looking somewhere around the Christmas holiday season. By the time we actually have a true groundbreaking start, so that's where you're looking.
I will say that we are ready to go. That is one thing that we do ahead of these, because we have a lead time with the approvals. So we've met with our contractor, and we are already ready to go, just like we did on St. Louis Street. We got our notice to proceed on Monday, and the following Monday, we were in construction. So we'd be moving quickly.
And approximately, how long this project is gonna last?
Eighteen months.
Eighteen months, the whole M L K?
Correct.
And so after that, then that mean we gonna finish Broad, South Broad Street, heading to New Airport, correct?
That's absolutely right. So that project is at sixty percent, sir, and we're expecting ninety percent, uh, design plans by January. We're on time with our design.
All right, sounds great.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Vice President.
You said that whole, my bad.
Vice President Penn.
No, go ahead. Mine doesn't relate to.
You, you, you talking about how far the project goes on M L K?
Yeah.
You know where the curve is? Most people don't know what Butchers Lane is. Do you know where M L K turns to Stone Street, just before Three Mile Creek? Well, Butchers Lane is right there on the right. Uh, it used to be an old shacking club back there years ago, but I think the city may have just put the, the sign back up for the street so people actually know what Butchers Lane is. So when you make that curve, just before you, it should be on the right.
It's not the whole M L K.
No, it's not the whole. It's, it's the whole M L K as we originally remember it before it turns into Stone Street.
It's directly across from the new trailhead of Three Mile Creek Greenway Trail as well, so it connects to that project.
Yeah, we, as Grandma, you said, when you cross over the branch right there, it turns Stone Street.
Yeah.
But on this side of the branch, it was M L K.
Jen, while you're there, um, can we get an update for everybody in the room on, on laying dredging and then the rerouting issues that we're having out there at the park?
So we made really good progress last week. We took about four hundred cubic yards out of the upper lake, so anyone?
Sorry, I did hit it, didn't I? Habit. We took about four hundred cubic yards out of the upper lake, so part of last week was also getting the rest of the equipment and all of our, you know, fencing and everything in place. So they're making really good progress. So people go out, they're able to see all the activity in the upper lake with the dredge bar moving around and the big long reach excavators. So really good progress. We have been working with the community about making sure they stay off Flornoy Drive. There's gonna be some pictures that go out that Parks and Rec is gonna share and the city gonna share later, just reminding people that it is an active construction site, and they need to walk on the grass. Safety is our number one priority, and we wanna make sure we keep as much of the park open as possible, but we need people to be safe.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you so much. Madam Clerk.
Twenty five thirteen forty-five, accept, accept temporary construction easements for drainage repairs for Tolman's Spring Branch. Thirteen, thirty-seven thirteen forty-six, revoke the business license at sixteen oh eight St. Stevens Road. Sixty thirteen forty-seven and thirteen forty-eight are authorizing settlement agreements and release of claims. Call for public hearings, forty-one thirteen forty-nine. Call for public hearing to consider vacation of all rights of way located within Lot One of M A A A C D C subdivision scheduled for November the eighteenth.
Uh, counsel, I understand why we don't have a council meeting, but, you know.
Exactly. I was thinking the same thing.
I mean, twice a month. I see why we have council meeting every week. Yeah, this is a longer agenda. And I was just looking at this agenda, all the good things that's on here, and I was like, why is Sandy Stimson retiring as mayor, you know?
Can, can you rethink that, Mayor?
It's too late.
Uh, Vice President.
Yeah, let's go over, um, things that we can waive the rules on, starting with our C I P resolutions. Um, twenty one twelve ninety-nine, and then go down to resolutions being introduced. There are a lot. Zero eight thirteen hundred, oh two, oh three, oh four, oh six, oh seven, oh eight, thirteen, fifteen, seventeen, eighteen, twenty-one, then thirteen thirty-three, thirty-four, and forty-three. Um, did I miss any? Okay, all right.
You know, just only know it.
No.
Anything from this council?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
We, we are purchasing a lot of equipment on this agenda, and I'm glad to see it. You know, those are the sort of things we ought to be spending our money on. Is, this is replacement of existing equipment that's beyond its life or at the end of its life, is that correct? Okay, I'm excited to see it. Hopefully, with this new equipment, it'll spark some, you know, new desire to get out there and be substantially more productive on some things, not that we're doing a bad job. I'm glad to see that we're teeing things up for this next mayor to come in and get back to doing some of the boring stuff that we all enjoy out in District Four, cutting grass, cleaning ditches, that sort of thing, trimming trees. Glad to see it on the agenda.
Anything else from this council? Anything from the administration? With counsel, we have been asked to go into executive session. Uh, we have Mr. Brent Bonner in, in front of us right now.
Good morning. I've got a request to go into executive session this morning. Uh, it'll be about fifteen minutes. Again, my name is Brenton Bonner. I'm attorney licensed in the state of Alabama, retained by the city to coordinate economic development activities. I assert the planned discussion within the proposed executive session meets the requirements of Section thirty-six twenty-five A dash seven of the Open Meetings Act, in particular, this executive session is necessary to discuss an economic development project. And hereby assert that discussions, if they were entered into the minutes or disclosed outside of the executive session, would have a detrimental effect upon the competitive position of the city and the project. Um, I do not anticipate there will be any action on this issue, uh, following the executive session. And again, it will take about fifteen minutes.
Properly moving second in discussion. Madam Clerk.
President Smok?
Yes.
Vice President Gregory?
Yes.
Counselor Member Penn?
Yes.
Counselor Member Carroll? Counselor Member Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Member Davis? Counselor Member Wood?
Yes.
All right, we'll see each other downstairs at ten thirty.